If you're tweeting or posting on Facebook or Instagram, use the hashtag Rowlett Debate so we can search for them and find them. I was actually able to do that last time and saw some comments, so that was really good to see. And just like the mayoral debate, it's going to be pretty much the same format. We're going to -- I have the order that the candidates will be asked questions. It's not the order they're seated in, so we're going to be bouncing back and forth. And most of the questions are general questions. There are a handful that are specific to some candidates, and they know that there are questions coming for them, but not all candidates have a specific question. So just so everyone knows, I didn't want those -- there were four questions that came in for specific candidates. I didn't want those candidates to feel picked on because the other three didn't get specific questions, so I gave them the option, and they opted to have those questions asked. So those questions will get asked as well that's specific for those candidates. Other candidates can comment, like in the last debate. So they'll have two minutes to respond to whatever the question is, and then any other candidate who wishes to speak will get a minute to add a response. If the first candidate wants to rebut that response, they can do that as well. I don't know if I was clear on that last time, but we can have that. We can make this a debate if they want to have conversation back and forth, as long as they keep it clean and nice. And if they don't, then our guys in the sound booth will just shut their mics off. So we do want to keep it clean and nice, friendly. There's been way, way too much negativity in Rowlett. Way, way too much. A little over, well, almost two years ago, I walked through the city of our -- I walked through the streets of our city and cried at the destruction. Now I lay in bed at night and want to cry because of the hate and the negativity that's going on, and it's got to stop, folks. If you don't like somebody up here, don't vote for them, but quit lying, quit hating, quit being ugly, and I'm done with my soapbox. And with that, we will get started, and I'm going to ask the candidates, in the order they were drawn, to do a -- give us a two-minute introduction. So we will start with Diane Lemmons.
I'm Diane Lemmons, as Michael indicated. I have spent the last 16 years of my life serving this city in one governmental position or another. Most recently, I was the Chamber Executive for the last six years. I also created the Chamber Foundation, which the Economic Development Department now uses to finalize deals and projects in our city. Prior to that, I worked for the city of Rowlett for 10 years, where I worked in economic development. I was also on the GIST Education Foundation Board of Directors. I was a Rowlett Rotarian. I served on the downtown review committee. Every development that has happened in the last 16 years, I've at least had a seat at the table. So I know why people held on to certain properties and didn't develop them in certain ways. I know why the city didn't want all these apartment complexes. I also know why certain things change and what's needed now. So I'm hoping with my experience and my dedication to this city that you'll consider voting for me. Thank you.
Jeff?
First of all, thank you all for coming this evening. It's so great to see so many friendly faces. My name is Jeff Winjit, and I'm running for City Council Place Two. For me, Rowlett's not just a home, and despite all the negativity that Michael mentioned, we do have a sense of community and friendship that's hard to find in other towns. So I'm running to give back, to serve and honor citizens, and to continue making Rowlett a place that we can call home. So let me tell you why I'm qualified to step into this role. I've been married to 11 years to my loving wife, and I'm a father to four amazing kids, and that makes me very invested in this city. I have over 10 years of leadership, data analysis, planning, and logistics, and that makes me a strong leader. I have several years of volunteer experience with my church, with my school's PTA, and with the Arts and Humanities Commission here in Rowlett, and that makes me a dedicated servant. Three of the goals that I have for this term are to definitely improve citizen involvement. I want to use targeted information sharing using social media through city events and in other ways to keep our citizens informed. That's the first step in bridging any gaps that exist between City Hall and the citizens that we serve. Secondly, smart and sustainable growth. DFW is currently overwhelmed with growth. Rowlett needs to ensure that that growth does not overwhelm us. We need to have special consideration for any future multifamily developments, large commercial buildings, or packaged liquor stores. And finally, infrastructure. Rowlett's at a tipping point, between our streets and alleys being repaired and them needing to be replaced. We need to make serious headway to make sure that we are repairing today instead of replacing tomorrow at 10 times the cost. Thank you all very much again for coming. I'm Jeff Winjit for Rowlett, City Council Place Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Matt?
Welcome, everybody. I want to say thank you to the Chamber and Church in the city for hosting us tonight. I see a lot of familiar faces in the crowd tonight because I've gotten out and I've gotten to meet so many great people. So what I wanted to talk about is what are the traits that make a good city council member? One of them is leadership, and leadership is something that has somebody that's been able to take a vision and turn it into reality. I've been able to do that in my six -- my three terms, six years on the Parks and Recreation Department. We took the vision of what Kids Kingdom is, and we actually turned it into reality. I've been a leader in many other commissions within this city. I've also been a leader in everything else that I've done. I've served on multiple national and state boards, including the International Society of Baboriculture and the Texas Chapter of -- Texas Chapter of Baboriculture. So I've served in a lot of different ways. Honesty is another thing that we want in a good candidate. I can tell you, you may not always agree with me, but I can tell you that I'll always be honest with you. Integrity. Integrity is something that we must have in our elected officials. Whether we are talking to a developer, whether we're talking to a citizen, whether we're talking amongst ourselves in a closed session, we must have integrity in everything that we do and make sure that we put the people of Rowlett first, because you are the ones that are choosing to put us up here. You must have confidence. This is not an easy job. It's not easy for anybody to become up here and have the arrows and the rocks that are slung at them and be up here and judged and asked questions. We don't all get along. Everybody has a different issue, but confidence must be key so that you can stand your ground. I believe that I have the confidence, the integrity, the honesty, and the leadership to be able to take Rowlett into the future, and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Lena, you're up next.
My name is Lena Khalil, and I'm running for Council Place One. I'm an engineer. I graduated from the University of Texas at Dallas, and I now work at Raytheon with nearly five years of industry experience. What I've learned through my education and on the job has been primarily project planning. Developing timelines, budgets, and assessing risk are just some of the skills I will bring to the council, and while all of us running for Place One would be new to that position, I know my education and these skills make me the best qualified to quickly acclimate to the work of the council. But getting up to speed is not the whole job. It is only the beginning. Over the course of this short campaign, I've knocked on over 1,000 doors and talked to hundreds of our neighbors all over the city, including many here tonight. We've spoken about the status quo in Rowlett, whether people are happy with the direction the city is headed, and the overall sense I get from those conversations is no. We, as a city council, need to honestly assess where our efforts as a city are lacking and where we have made mistakes in the past. Given Rowlett's growth, we need to reevaluate our priorities for the future and catch up on the work we are already behind on. This is what I stand for as the candidate for Place One. I won't just come into the role as a yes vote to blindly continue down the path the city is -- the city has been on. With the tremendous growth we have seen and will continue to see, Rowlett has to make sure we get this right, right now. My engineering experience gives me the skills to understand the projects and policies the city faces. Just as importantly, I have experience making sure my voice is heard. As a member of several marginalized communities, I know what it's like to feel like you've been forgotten, overlooked, or ignored. My experience advocating for myself gives me the strength and empathy to be a strong advocate for you and for all of our neighbors in Rowlett. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Gallups and the Rowlett Chamber of Commerce and Church in the city for hosting this event. My name is Robert Blake Margolis, and I'm running for Rowlett City Council Place One. I know many of you have concerns about my age, so I'd like to talk about the positives of my age for you, the citizens of Rowlett. Because I'm not yet 21, I cannot take your money to a casino and gamble it away, and I can't show up to a city council meeting hungover. Okay, I'll get serious. Running for -- running for city council as a seat is not something that I decided to do on a whim. I've been preparing for this for 12 years. I knew this is what I wanted to do at age six, when I attended a Rowlett Town Hall meeting and stood up in front of a couple hundred people in the mayor and city council to ask about Mayor's Park. I created Rowlett Scanner on social media when I was 14, and if any of you followed the page, you saw how much time and effort was involved. The purpose of the page was to inform the people of emergency and city events. I volunteered over 15,000 hours to keeping the public informed. While the page wasn't meant to benefit me personally, it absolutely did. I have learned so much about how the city is run, the people who keep it going, and the brave men and women who protect it. I've been fortunate to be able to build so many relationships with first responders, city staff, and more importantly, the wonderful people that live in Rowlett. I'm currently finishing up Liberty Christian University, which is accredited by the state of Texas. All my teachers are college professors, and they made it very clear on my first day that this was not going to be easy. My first assignment with Liberty University was to write a 5,000-word essay. That may not sound like much, but it was a lot for eighth grade, and I still had 600 classes that day, too. My plan when I graduate with my classes to attend University of Texas at Dallas to obtain a master's in political and management science. I feel fortunate to have lived here in Rowlett my entire life. I work in Rowlett, and I'm currently on my second term on the Rowlett Parks and Recreation Board in the city. I have met and talked with thousands of people in Rowlett over the last few years, and I believe that I can be a voice for everyone. My name is Blake Margolis, and I'm running for Rowlett City Council Place One. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake. Brownie?
Hello, I'm Brownie Sherrill, running for Rowlett City Council Place Two. I'm a lifelong resident of this area. I remember when Lake Ray Hubbard was farmland and Dalrock was two lanes with. My wife Sue Ann and I were married and moved to Rowlett 26 years ago, and I am a great-grandfather. I'm a retired IT professional from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, which that affords me the time to be on council. I'm very much a public servant. I love people. I'm a community builder, and anyone that knows me knows that I will lend a hand if you need. I'm a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy, Citizens Fire Academy, Citizens City Academy, and Leadership Rowlett. I have served on the Park and Recreation Advisory Board and on the Charter Review Board, where I was a subcommittee chairman. I'm currently on the Senior Advisory Board. I'm an ambassador with the Rowlett Chamber of Commerce, and I'm an active member of the Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT. I'm running for the Rowlett City Council to escalate my volunteering to a whole new level. I want to serve Rowlett to make it a better place to live. I will analyze each project and -- on its own merits and facts. I'm a financial conservative, meaning I believe you live within your means, and I think that goes for cities, too. I want our infrastructure to be brought up to a sustainable level, and city employees to be retained and competitively compensated. I want our economic development to reflect sustainable, well-planned growth for everyone with a key focus on higher-paying jobs, and I want to make sure our future plans are executed before the future gets here. I'm Brownie Sherrill. I'm running for City Council Place Two.
Thank you, Brownie. And Israel?
My name is Israel Yassiz. First, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and Church in the city for holding this debate tonight. I moved here six years ago, and Rowlett became our home. I told my wife one day that I wanted to run for mayor of the city one day. My wife thought I was just playing around, joking around with it. Six years, almost exactly, our mayor was resigning, and I told my wife, this is my chance now. So I threw my name in the hat, and it was, you know, it was right that I wanted to do for the city. I wanted to be involved with the city. Todd got together with me and said that he felt like it wasn't the right time. So I had to back off a little bit. I had a lot of supporters, and he just made it -- he, you know, made me realize that right now was too early to run for mayor. So he wanted me to run for city council, so that's when I decided to throw my name in the hat for City Council Place One. I just want to do what's right for the city and for the people. I want to be your voice. There is a lot of stuff that needs to be done for our city. Roads, alleys, there's a lot of stuff, and I just want to make sure that we all come in as -- together as a team and do what we can to do what's right for our city. But everything that's going on right now is -- I just want to bring everybody together as one, to keep Rowlett on the map so that when people come to visit, they say, wow, Rowlett was awesome. Go visit the city of Rowlett. They're good people. No, I mean, everyone is good, but not everybody's going to be agreeing with things that we decide that we want to do, because either which way we choose, people are not going to be happy, but we're going to do what we can. So once again, I want to be your next city councilman, so please vote for me when I -- on the -- early voting, and then on the 26th. Thank you.
Thank you, Israel. All right. Diane, we're going to start with you for the first question. And some of this you may have answered in your introduction, but part of it you haven't. How long have you lived in Rowlett? What is your current occupation, and what do you consider to be your number-one priority in service to the citizens of Rowlett?
Okay. I've lived in Rowlett for nine years now, but again, I've worked here for 16 and just recently took a new position. I do business retention and expansion for the Economic Development Corporation of the city of the colony. I'm sorry, what was the other?
What do you consider to be your number-one priority in service to the citizens of Rowlett?
I think it's vital that we make sure that we build commercial, commercial, commercial. And I say this because ever since I've been working in this capacity for this city, the taxes have been super lopsided, and the burdens resided on the citizens. So in order to better balance that, we're going to have to build the commercial. And, you know, until recently, commercial was very hard to come by for our city because we had -- there was no visibility, there was no accessibility. Unless you lived here, you didn't even know where we were or where Rowlett was. Trade shows and everywhere I went, I had to explain, you know, that we share the lake with Rockwall. Well, now we have some access. Now we have some visibility. We have one shot to get this right. Commercial development is key. Building a whole lot of apartments is not going to work. That is not going to offset the taxes for the citizens. Do I say no apartments? No, I don't say that. What I'm saying is no apartments in the interior of our neighborhoods. If we build apartments, they need to be in conjunction with a corporate campus or a larger commercial development. That would work. That's my stance on that. Thank you.
Any other candidates? How's your chance?
Hello, everyone. My name is Lena Khalil. I'm a software engineer. Just kidding. So I want to expand a little bit on my software engineering background, why that makes me the most qualified candidate for Place One. Software engineering is predominantly project management skills. Those skill sets, the budgets, the timelines, all of that really applies to any kind of big projects. I'll be able to jump right into the city council role, apply those experiences to the city projects, and that gives me the leg up on the learning curve. Where it goes from there, I want to prioritize the infrastructure, bring it up to the level it needs to be in the population. As Diane said, we need to diversify our tax base so we take the burden of the tax -- taxes off our residential sector. Thank you.
I didn't get to it in my opening, but I've lived in Rowlett for 13 years, and a lot of people know me around town as the tree guy, but I'm a lot more than the tree guy, just because I've been on the Parks and Recreation Board. I work for the Texas Trees Foundation, and I have a degree in forestry and environmental science, so I know that kind of makes me the tree guy. But I work on a regional scale with planners, with developers, with economic development teams, with parks and recreations, and municipalities from as big as Dallas to as small as Argyle, and all different types of development. And it's not just about development, but it's how do we do sustainable development? The one thing that Diane did get right is we have one shot at this, and we need to make sure that it's sustainable, and we can't just develop everything. We have to make sure that we maintain good park space and open space, because those are really the backbones of our community. How we have trail systems, how we have parks, and how we maintain our community health through a sustainable urban tree canopy cover, sustainable development, and making sure that we have open space for people to be able to recreate and to visit is super, super important. Thank you.
Nobody else wants to talk about their number-one priority?
You're going to twist my arm, I wonder. So I've lived in Rowlett for three years. I'm currently a logistics manager with the duty-free shops at DFW Airport, where I've been almost 11 years now. My key priority in running for council is to improve communication. I want to share information with citizens. We need to push information out to you, not have you come and pull it out of us. We need to foster a relationship of trust between our city officials and the citizens we serve, and ensuring that we, as leadership, are upholding our responsibility to make the best choices for you and making every effort to involve you in those choices. Thank you.
I've lived here my whole life. I said that in the introduction. I think one of the top priorities with the new council would be to get our infrastructure up to par. Also, like they said, balance our tax base. 80% here is residential, 20% is commercial. We need to balance that, get the burden off the taxpayers. Thank you.
I've lived here longer than anybody up here on the stage. I've been here 26 years. One of the things that I want to see this city do is competitively compensate their employees. We have a great staff here. Our Public Works Department is second to none. We have a great staff. We cannot afford to lose any of these people because it costs a lot of money to retrain and re-employ somebody, you know, after they're gone. So I really want to see them competitively compensated, and I thank you very much.
I lived in Rowlett for six years. Forgot to mention, also been married to my wife for 14 years. Got five boys, one girl, and I'm also a grandfather of four grandkids. And what I want to do is, like I said, I just want to come in and do the best job I can as your next city councilman to make sure our city is where it needs to be, our infrastructure is just -- get it to where it -- where people are all comfortable here in our city. Like I said, whatever choice we make, some people are going to be happy, some people ain't, but we're going to do the best job we can. And I just wanted -- also just like to have the same supporters that I've had at one time, keep supporting me, and I just want to be your next city councilman. Thank you.
This next question, we're going to start with Jeff. What do you believe are the top five most essential services of city government? And if you had to eliminate one existing department, which would it be and why?
Top five definitely are going to be police and fire, being two separate ones, so I don't sell myself short. Public Works would probably be number three. I believe -- I believe our city staff that work downtown at City Hall would be number four, and Parks and Rec are definitely a key part of our city as well. Now, I mulled this over after the mayoral debate of which position or which department I would cut if I was required to. And I would like to think that we could find a way to spread the cuts evenly amongst the departments in any way that we can so that we're not losing any department within the city. But if worse came to worse, I think we would definitely have to analyze what sort of cost-benefit wet zone is to our city. If there's -- I know a ton of people visit it. It's a huge draw as far as tourism, but if it's profitable, obviously it's going to stick around. And the other one that I would have to say, and I hate to say it because I love our library services director, is the library. I work very closely with Kathy, and that would be one of the hardest things I would have to do, would be to cut the library, but I feel like it would be the only reasonable option if we were in a position that we had to do that. Thank you so much.
They told us to tell them when we're getting the mics so that we would -- anyway. I really dislike these hypothetical argumentative questions like this because I'm not real sure what purpose it serves, because honestly, we're never going to have to cut a department in our city. That's just my opinion. I don't think we'll ever have to cut a department. We may have a reduction in force, but we're not going to cut a department. We could conceivably sell the wet zone to an outside investor and turn it into a revenue generator and a property taxpaying entity for our city if we had to cut something. That would be my opinion. Don't think we'd ever have to cut any department.
Since I've been on the Parks and Rec Board, I feel I need to address this because our Parks and Rec Board does a fantastic job, and the wet zone, not only is it profitable, but it's completely self-sustainable, as well as the rec center. So our Parks Department has done more with little than any other department probably in this city, and there is not one department that's more important than the others. If Public Works wasn't there, how are the ambulances and the fire trucks going to get to your house? If we don't have public safety, we're not going to be there. If we don't have parks, we're going to have bad air quality, which is going to put more pressure on everything. So there isn't one that's more important to the other, and if those hard cut -- if those hard decisions have to be made, then those hard decisions will have to be made, but under my watch, we're not going to cut anything. Thank you.
Well, I think our top department would just be one department. That would be your city staff, top to bottom, and the best ones around. Now, if I had to cut one, I think what we would have to do in this case is go to the citizens and ask the citizens, what is it you would be willing to do without? I don't think we could get an answer. That's the way I would handle that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I may, I just want to respond to Matt. First of all, Matt, I can appreciate your dedication to the parks, and I understand where you're coming from. It wasn't that long ago, though, that the wet zone was a drain on the revenues in the city. It was not sustaining itself. At one point, staff was given direction that you've got six months to turn it around or we're turning it off, and that was the deal. My whole comment wasn't, I believe that it's a great service for our city. I just think with outside investor, it could possibly be even more than it is now, because someone else may have the money to throw at it and, you know, make it larger, make it bigger. Right now, it really serves basically one demographic, the little guys. And don't get me wrong, I love the little guys. But if the wet zone was given to an investor and they spend a lot of money, you know, it might be something that, you know, the older generation might want to go see. So that was just my comment on that.
And I completely agree with what you're saying, and I think the credit needs to be given to the Parks Department, and at a time, there might be a time to be able to address that. And one of our board members, his name is Don Glendening, and worked very closely with him when they privatized the zoo in Dallas. And so there is opportunities out there to be able to look at things like that. But right now, there is a big debate going on right now if they privatize Fair Park, and those are discussions that need to be had, and those are discussions that need to be had by people that have been on both sides of it and aren't ready to just shut something down because maybe it's not making a profit. Thank you.
Which department would I would cut first? I think what I would do is go back and just go to each one and see which one we would have to cut. Now, the ones that I support the most, Police Department and the firefighters, because for one, my son's a firefighter in Arkansas. So that one there, those are my two ones that I would support. But if I had a choice to cut, I would try not -- I would go back and try real hard not to try to cut none of them, because I think everyone here deserves to be where they need to be. Thank you.
Matt, we're gonna start with you on this next question. What unique qualifications, background, experience, knowledge, or talents do you have that would make you the best choice?
Well, I won't repeat my opening remarks, but I think what really, my broad experience in a lot of different avenues in terms of how a city is run, though I've never exactly worked for a city, what I have done is I worked for essentially a lot of different cities because I do consulting on a day-to-day basis for cities all over the city. And we have worked with zoning cases, we work with ordinance cases, we work with economic development teams, we work with city planners, I work with the North Central Texas Regional Council of Governments to look at long, large-scale transportation planning for the entire North Texas area. And these are all issues that we're facing here at a local level in Rowlett. And those 18-plus years of experience, plus my experience that I have in the communities that I have served on here locally, I think make me more than suitable to be able to hold this position for city council. Beyond just serving on the Parks Board, I was also on the Downtown Selection Committee with Diane. I was also on the committee that helped form the Form-Based Codes. I was also very involved with the first Rowlett 2020 plan. And all of those are things that we're getting ready to redo. And so I hopefully will be able to bring some vision to that in terms of where we need to improve on those plans moving forward with our next comprehensive plan. Thank you.
I guess the unique thing that I feel like I bring to the table is the fact that I've been doing essentially what we're asking the council to do for the last 16 years. I bet a lot of you didn't know, or maybe you did, that Rowlett was actually in the running for the Cowboys Stadium before it was built. And the reason we didn't get it is because we didn't own the land. So we didn't own the land, there was no infrastructure, so we couldn't sell something that wasn't ours. So I think I bring a unique set of skills to the table because I actually know what happened a long time ago, why we did what we did, and I know what we need to do in the future. So that's my unique skill. I've served on so many boards and commissions, I would be hard-pressed to name them all for you. Thank you.
It seems like we're getting into a debate between Diane and Matt, but just to remind you, there is place one and place two still here to talk to you as well. I want to just reiterate, I am a software engineer. Keep plugging that. I mean, I have a college education, graduated from University of Texas at Dallas. My ability to articulate my points and get up here and just be brave in kind of, my heart's beating a thousand miles an hour, and my ability to continue that, continue this despite that, I think is really important. I can, I'll be a strong advocate on the city council and bring structure and organized thinking to the debates because I'm going to speak up and I'm going to have my ideas and I'm gonna want people to hear my ideas. Thank you.
One of the key things I bring to the table is gonna be my in-depth research and analysis that I do when looking at things. I don't know how many of you are on Facebook, and the Rowlett page is a bit crazy at times, but I try to always post informational things there about the council meetings and other things that are going on. The work packets that the council gets on a bi-weekly basis and sometimes a weekly basis can be 200 to 300 to 800 pages in length. And I'm reading through those and I'm looking at what's going on in our city, and I'm trying to better understand so that I can share with you. Because if I throw 800 pages at you and expect you to read it and understand it, I'm not doing a very good job as a city council member. And these are things that our city council members need to be able to do and to accomplish going forward. Thank you.
Now, since Jeff came up here, I've got to come up here, right? I'm a, one of the things I bring to the city council is I'm retired. I have time to serve on city council, day in and day out. Plus, I have a wife who wants to get me out of the house periodically, so that works well, too. I was in IT with Blue Cross Blue Shield, as Lena was saying about the, you know, the planning and everything that goes through, the project management of IT, she's right. And we go through a lot of it, we do a lot of project management. But the one thing, one of the main things I bring is the fact that I'm retired and have time to serve. Thanks.
What makes me qualify for this position? One, I'm a family man. Two, I've worked since I was 18 years old. I graduated from South Grand Prairie High School. From there, I wanted to join the Air Force, but wasn't able to because I failed their exam. So yes, I was disappointed in that for a long time, but then, like I said, I've worked since I was 18 years old. I've worked for Dealers Auto Walks, and I've worked for, also did a lot of volunteering work for Special Olympics. I also, right now, be volunteering for LV Ministry where we go out and feed the homeless. Number two, we got two, one is 18, the other one 25, 26 years old, 27 years old. I feel like right now is not their time. They still have a whole life ahead of them. They could always come back later and run for city council or even also for mayor. Right now, I feel like it's my time. I'm 47 years old, and I just feel like it's my time to come in and do what I gotta do, what's right for the city and for the people. Thank you.
I would think that one of the qualifications I bring is that I have been involved in my city for 12 years. I've got to meet a lot of the city staff, I've got to see many boards, city council boards, come in and out. And I'm on the Boards of Commission seat right now, have been for two terms for the Rowlett Parks Integration Board. I've also volunteered a lot of time to the city, and I think that's one of the big qualifications to have. I really don't think age matters, I think qualifications matter.
Since Israel brought up my age and how much younger I am than him, I want to just bring up the fact that I do have adult life experiences, and that sets me apart from one of the younger, the youngest candidate up here. But it also ensures that I, I do have the experiences. I've had a job since I was 16 years old, and I graduated from college when, in 2015. And I've had an industry job at Raytheon for almost five years now. And through those experiences, I mean, I pay my bills, I just bought a house last year in Rowlett. I was buying a house last year, and I looked at Plano, I looked at Saxon, I looked at Wiley, and I decided to buy in Rowlett because it's such a beautiful community, I want to keep it a beautiful community. Thank you.
Let me just, I don't think it's true that I don't have any life experience just because of my age. I do have life experience, just wanted to clarify that.
One thing, sorry. I didn't mean no life experience. I think the child, your childhood is an extremely important part of your life, and it shapes who you are. And Blake's an incredible kid, but adult life experiences, everybody in the room knows what that means.
All right. Next question. Since Lena was feeling left out, we're gonna start with her this time. So we'll start with somebody from place one, and this is one of the questions we heard at the mayoral debate, so you might have had some time to think about it. Hopefully, you paid attention to that, all of you who are gonna answer. What is the elephant in Rowlett's room? In other words, what is the biggest problem or challenge the city is facing in the next five years that nobody's talking about? What would you do about it?
I, you know what? That question was asked at the mayoral debate, and that's a really great question. I think we have enough problems that aren't elephants in the room. I don't know, I mean, I've talked to thousands, hundreds of people in this community, we're already talking about so many problems, let's address the problems that are in front of us, the infrastructure, the tax rate, the, let's grow Bayside and the downtown area in a structured, organized way. I don't know, Bruce did bring up a great point, I think, at the last debate. He said that we are a reactive community and we should be a proactive community, that the city spends a lot of time reacting to the growth and trying to fix things when they break instead of getting upfront and planning our growth over the course of several years. So I think that might actually be an elephant in the room. So I guess I answered your question. And I'm having a really great time, I want to thank everybody for being here. Thank you.
What I would consider to be the elephant in the room is that we've reserved over a thousand acres of land in the North Shore for commercial development that we don't own. We can zone it however we want, but as long as those owners aren't willing to sell, you can't build that corporate campus. You can't count on those, that property out there to offset our tax base. So to me, that's a big elephant. There are some piecemeal properties out there that have assembled themselves, so we do have some opportunity for development out there, but the goal is to make it a bigger development, and those property owners aren't ready to sell. They're farmers and they're gonna keep on farming. The other thing, lost my train of thought. Oh, never mind, I lost it again. Sorry.
I was actually at the mayoral debate, and that was a very great question, and it actually got me to really thinking. And I think the elephant in our room is, is that people hear all these huge population growth numbers, that we're gonna double in the next, you know, 30 years, and it's really hard to wrap your mind around that. But it's happening. There's a thousand people a month moving to Texas. And infrastructure, though, it is a known elephant in the room, the expansion of our infrastructure, we're not paying enough attention to. Yes, we have to make sure the infrastructure that we have is in place, but we need to be planning for future infrastructure needs, and how do we do that sustainably? The other thing is, is you look at our municipal service centers, they're spread out all over the place. We need to be able to get our city staff so that they can function more efficiently, and that is one way that we can help with costs within the city as well. So being able to look at that in the future is gonna be something that's gonna be very, very important, that I don't think is being given enough of a look at. Thank you.
So I would think that the elephant in the room would be that, and this is a fun fact, okay? So half of our sales tax ever since 1983 has gone to DART. And so we've spent over 100 million, or about 100 million dollars since 1983. Well, we have one quadrant in the city that DART buses use. I think since we've spent so much money, and we will continue to spend so much money with half of our sales tax going to DART, I think we need to expand the quadrants or have more, especially with the population growth in the city.
It came back to me. The other thing I wanted to add, that for the last 16 years that I've been a part of development and things of that nature, there has been no shortage of multifamily developers. Ever since I've been a part of this city, multifamily has been pitched to our city. And for many, many years, our city has reserved land and properties for single-family, but mainly for commercial. So I think with that, with that tradition, that's something we really need to consider. That is an elephant in the room. We do not want a whole lot of apartments in this community. We like our bedroom community the way it is, but apartments are gonna be needed in conjunction with commercial developments.
All right, Blake, we're gonna start with you on this next question. And this is a question for everybody again, so anybody that wants to answer can. Do you favor the trend toward more high-density housing development? Why or why not?
So I haven't got to really look into the HFC in the city that was just implemented. I would say, I do agree with Diane's last statement, that to attract commercial development, we need to offer all kinds of housing in the city. I do think for apartments, we need to be very careful where we put those developments, but, for apartments, but that's my answer to that. Thank you.
That's a very complicated question there, Michael. The apartments have been a huge issue in this community. People are for them, people are against them, and there isn't really much room in the middle between those two extremes, it seems like, when you talk to people. And we need to find, to be honest, apartments are, need to be a part of, are gonna be a part of any community, particularly with growth. We're experiencing huge population growth in this community all over Dallas County, and we need to provide a diverse set of housing options in this community, but we need to know where and, and we, because not everybody wants to live in a home, okay? Some people, they just, they like to live in apartments. I know a lot of people like that. So we need to provide people diverse housing options for the diverse citizens that we have in this community. Thank you.
This is definitely not a white elephant in the room, this is a really, really big elephant in the room, and that's why it's made it in so many debates. And when people say apartments, a lot of times what comes to mind is Section 8. And I don't think that's what anybody up here is talking about. What it's talking about is a diverse housing. And I think it's interesting to know that we had, a friend of my wife's had to live with us for a month. She's a single mother, just got divorced, and she could not afford to, and she's a teacher, and she could not afford a home in Rowlett. And she didn't have any other options, and she was able, finally able to find a house that she could rent. So we have to have diversified housing. Now, do we have to make sure it goes in the right place? Yes, we do. We can't be plopping down multifamily residential homes in the middle of residential areas. There has to be a place for them. But we can't just automatically suggest that apartments means Section 8. We have to have diverse housing with the population that we have in Rowlett. Thank you.
Yes, I am for apartments. I feel like everyone has lived in apartments. I've lived in them. Everybody's lived in them. But not everybody can afford a home. We almost didn't get to live here because we couldn't find nowhere to live that we could afford. We finally, a friend of ours told us about the townhomes that are down on, she's in Alyssa. Those we were able to move into, and that's why we lived here for so long. Yes, we are trying real hard to buy a home. Right now, we just can't. But I know one day we will be able to. But apartments, or apartments, but not too many apartments. Can have them, but not too many. I feel like just everyone gets a chance to live, you could say they can live here and afford to live here in the city of Rowlett, because not everybody, like I said, not everybody can afford a home. So yes, I am for apartments. Thank you.
I can appreciate what you're saying, Israel. My whole thought on this apartment debate is, currently, we already have citizens here. Those are the ones we need to take care of, not those future citizens that we don't have yet. So that's not even on the table for me.
I want to add to my answer, because this is a bit of a more nuanced question than you can really answer in a minute. And currently, we're like, everybody's been talking about, I mean, this is, this is the hot-ticket issue that we're experiencing in Rowlett is the population growth. How do you support the people we have? And how do you, how do you support the people that are coming here? Because they're gonna come here whether we like it or not. So we need, the issue, though, then, is, well, we're having issues supporting the population we have, and in terms of infrastructure. I'm gonna keep saying infrastructure, and everybody else is gonna keep saying infrastructure. And so I personally, I don't know how we're going to address this. We have a lot of great apartment complexes coming up right now, so maybe we can slow down the developments on that until we can catch up to the population we have. Thank you.
So just to be clear, apartments are not a four-letter word, okay? They're just not. That being said, the city of Rowlett should not feel obligated to provide apartments for all these potential growth that we're gonna have, right? We need to allow our city services to keep up with our growth. We should only put in as many apartments as our city services are gonna be able to support. We have a police department, we have a fire department, we have a public works department that has to go out and do their job every day, right? And if we add 10, 20, 30,000 people within the next few years, are our city services gonna be able to support that additional influx of people? I'm not... I'm not sure. I don't know. But I think we need to carefully look at that before we just say, build apartments everywhere. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate something I said earlier. Ever since I've been doing development in this city for the last 16 years, either development or retention for businesses, there has been no shortage of multifamily developers. Developers have been coming for years and years and years, and I'm sure that it was even before my time, trying to put apartments here. Rowlett has held fast all this time, holding on to the fact that we like having the bedroom community that we do. We just need to offset the commercial tax base. You're not offsetting the commercial tax base if you're building apartments. Now, that can happen in conjunction with a commercial development way out there in the North Shore on that property that we don't own, but no apartments need to be built in the interior of our city where our neighbors live.
Okay. Brownie, we're going to start with you for the next question. As home values have risen, we've had massive net tax increases and homeowners need relief before we are priced out of being able to remain in Rowlett or to be able to remain Rowlett citizens. With that in mind, are you willing to commit with no equivocation to a property tax rate cut?
Yes. Yes, we need to, you know, when we have too much money in the coffers, if that's what happens, you know, we get too much and it's over our budget, yes, it needs to be returned to the citizens, absolutely. I don't know what else I could say about that.
All right. So just so everyone's aware, first and foremost, the city manager proposed a budget for fiscal year 18, which does include a one-cent tax rate. Yay, that's awesome, okay? The place that Brownie and I are running for expires in May of 2019. The only thing we could commit to, the two of us, as far as I'm concerned, would be to an additional one-cent or more tax cut for the next year. That's what I stand behind. I stand behind a one-cent tax cut in the next fiscal year, fiscal year 19, when we're putting that budget together this time in 2018. I feel like if we continue to run a lean budget and our city makes wise investments into infrastructure and ensure we competitively compensate our employees and reduce turnover and with continued growth in our city, these future tax deductions should be well within reach. Thank you.
Okay. I'm the commercial developer girl. If we build the commercial development, you'll see your taxes go down. The city that I'm currently working for has lowered their taxes for the last 16 years straight. And the way they've done that is by building sustainable commercial development. So with that in mind, I would be willing to cut taxes every year.
We were instructed, if we agreed, not to stand up, but I want to make sure that everybody aware that we're all in favor of tax cuts that is up here. And we are having one cent this year and would be in favor for years to come. And Diane is exactly right. For us to do that the easiest way is to bring in that diversified commercial development. So, thank you.
All right. Israel, we're going to start with you for the next question. Oh, go ahead, Lena.
I want to talk about how kind of, so everybody here knows, you know, when your property tax appraisals go up, your taxes go up, right? And that doesn't mean the city raised or raised the tax rate. It means the appraisal values go up. If the appraisal goes up, we're going to get more money in the city. We need to justify that budget before, and if we can't justify that increased income with the city services, then absolutely, we need to lower the tax rate to be sustainable, what we needed last year or any small amount that we may need this year. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Israel. In this again for all candidates, what qualifies you to understand the unique needs facing the city of Rowlett?
Question. The needs, oh. Oh, that was a good question. I wasn't prepared for this one. The needs for the city. I'll come back to that. I'm stuck.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think what qualifies me with regard to the unique needs of this city is that for the last 16 years, this city has been training me to be on council. I understand where we came from, I understand where we're going. And with that in mind, I actually know how the process works. I know when they go to Board of Adjustments. I know the planning process. I was instrumental in helping redo the development code that the planners go by. I've had a hand in all of that over the last 16 years and I think that gives me a unique qualification to better serve this community. Thank you.
Kind of like Brownie said, one of us talks, the other one's got to get up and talk. So for where I'm at, you know, ditto to everything that Diane just said, but also I'm a resident of Rowlett and my family is here in Rowlett. And I've lived here for 13 years. And I feel that Rowlett chose us. And so the big reason that I'm running for city council is because I want to make a better place for my family to grow up. I want it to be a healthier place. I want it to be a place that we can continue to afford. I want it to be a place that my kids can afford when they grow up so that they don't leave. But not in my house. I want them to buy their own house or apartment or whatever, but I don't want them to go away. But I've lived here for 13 years and I'm a resident of Rowlett. And that's what makes me qualified to know what we need.
Life experience is like I said, I've worked since I was 18. I want to do a job for the city. Like I said, I've got children that I want them to see their dad do something good for their city. So that way, maybe one day, my kids will want to run for city council or even also for mayor of this city. I want them to be proud seeing that their dad has done something good for their city. And like I said, I've worked all my life since I was 18 and that's why I feel like I'm qualified for this job. I might not have all that college experience and just high school, but I've never been in politics, but I know that voting for me, that I would do the best job I can for you and for the city. Thank you.
I've already talked about my software engineering skills, so today, right now, I'm going to talk about my ability to learn. Before this campaign started, I decided to run two months ago, there isn't a single person in this room, besides my dad over there, that knew my name before this campaign started. I didn't know a thing about campaigning. And today, this race has been, you know, incredibly, I've amassed the following of incredible supporters and people know me and they love me. If that's not a testament to my ability to learn, to jump into something, my ability to figure things out, I don't know what is. A lot of people have been supporting me through this and I just want to thank all of them for that. Thank you so much.
I wanted to talk about what Lena said, because one thing that I really appreciate what these candidates have all been through is, except for maybe Brownie, this is probably the first time all of us have run for a city place. And the one thing that I've learned doing this is, like a lot of these people up here, I've knocked on a lot of doors and I've talked to a lot of people and I've talked to a lot of people that are in this room. And I did more than just talk to them, I listened to them. And that's been the best part of learning about how to campaign. Because if I'm going to come up here and ask for your support to put me on city council, I need to know what your thoughts are, I need to know what your feelings are, and I need to know what you think the best things are for Rowlett. Because if I'm elected, I will be representing you. Thank you.
Okay. Diane, this next question is for you. And it's a long question. I'm just reading what I got. Attracting new businesses that bring good jobs to Rowlett is critical so that commercial development can help ease the tax burden that our residents now bear and is a main focus of our city. Many closed-door executive sessions are held where staff reveals proprietary incentive strategies to council to seek their consensus in pursuing these opportunities. Considering your full-time job is to bring those businesses to the colony in direct competition with Rowlett, why do you feel that such an apparent conflict of interest would not cripple your ability to effectively serve on Rowlett's council?
To be fair, the conflict of interest would be for the colony. I mean, honestly, have you seen the development there? No. I spoke with both the city manager and my boss with regard to this because, you know, it was something that I thought about and there's no conflict there. There will be no conflict with me. I'm a true honest person. I have integrity. And more importantly than that, I have so much love for this community and I have dedicated literally the last 16 years of my life doing this. I think what it would bring is, or what it just reiterates is my experience. I mean, the only reason I left my job at the chamber is because I had to have retirement insurance and benefits and I didn't have it there. Or I would have never left that chamber. But at the end of the day, this is what I'm trained to do, this is what I do best. And so I'm grateful that the colony hired me and I'm grateful that they believe in me and they're supporting me in this council bid. So I don't believe there's a conflict of interest. I would never do anything, first of all, that would jeopardize me because you can actually go to jail for things like that and/or my job. Thank you.
Okay. The other day, we had spoken to the president and the vice president of Dollar Tree. I told them what my plans were, what I was doing, and they were telling me that they were behind me 100%. But as your next city councilman, I will be attending every meeting, everything that we're involved to do as our job, I will be there to do. I just let them know they're behind me 100% and I'm just going to do, is attend every meeting. And I just want to just tell all the people that are behind me, just stay behind me, continue supporting me as your next city councilman. Thank you.
Jeff, this question was written specifically addressed to you. What project, while on the Arts and Humanities Commission, do you think the time spent could have been used better on another project?
I don't. I feel like our time is quite valuable and the time that we spend together discussing the topics that we discuss is well-used. Occasionally, we get off track. I think that happens with any meeting. But generally speaking, I think all the projects that we worked on and continue to work on are admirable. I think the work that we do on the Arts and Humanities Commission is great. I would not criticize a single aspect of what we do. I think it's exactly what we were all called to do and what we're doing. Thank you.
All right. Matt, this question was sent in specifically for you. Since being on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, what member on the board do you admire as a leader, what member on the board do you most admire as a leader and future thinker?
Currently or past, did it say?
We'll leave that up to you.
Oh, there has been a tremendous amount of great leaders that I have been able to have the pleasure to be able to serve with on that board. Two of them are sitting right back there, Wayne and Bruce. And when Bruce decided to run for mayor, he, both Wayne and Bruce called me up and said, hey, can we go have some coffee? And I went and had coffee with them and they're like, you know what, you're one of the leaders on Parks Board and we think that you would be a fantastic representative as one of our next city council members. And that right there is true leadership, to be able to see somebody that's been on a board for a long period of time and has put in their due diligence and work and has helped to move that forward and to be able to see that and have the leadership to be able to take that person and bring them to the next level. Also, our current chair, I'm currently vice chair, but our current chair, E.C. Youngberger, is a fantastic leader and is fantastic. I just can't stop when I start talking about the Parks Board. The reason that, one of the reasons we have such a great parks system is because of our Parks Board. We have another one in the back, Lonnie, who's been on there forever and is also on the Board of Keep Rowlett Beautiful. These guys give of their time, they give of themselves, they give of their resources to make Rowlett and the park system a better place. And I'm just honored to have been able to serve with all of them. Thank you.
Give us just a second, folks. We're having a battery issue on her phone, so we're going to switch timers. Lena, we're going to start with you on this question. And this is a general question again. What is the city's role in growing the economy and how can we best attract businesses to Rowlett while supporting existing businesses?
That's a tough question, to be honest. So the city council's role is to support the economic development staff and consider suggestions from them. And to be honest, I don't have a lot of experience on the city council, so I don't have a great answer for this one. But, man, I, maybe I can piggyback off somebody else's answer later. Just kidding. All right. I'm going to pass on this one. Sorry, guys.
You need to reread the question.
What is the city's role in growing the economy and how can we best attract businesses to Rowlett while supporting existing businesses?
Part of our growing the economy is through our economic development. We need to search out more businesses for Rowlett and everything else. And I think our economic development has already brought in extra staff to help find these businesses. Now, we support our businesses today with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm an ambassador with the chamber and we definitely support our businesses. We're there when they need us, encourage them. And for new businesses, again, that's economic development. They are bringing them in. We have, like I said, a larger staff. They're out, they're looking for businesses and bringing them to Rowlett.
So Brownie's right in regards to economic development, but I would, as a city councilman, I'm going to challenge our economic development team to not just go for the low-hanging fruit, the easy businesses to get a hold of. We need to be looking, we need to be looking and thinking big as a city in terms of what we're going after. And also fostering a positive working relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. That needs to be ongoing so that we have a continued relationship in the way that we treat our businesses in our city. Thank you.
One of the things I'm not sure everyone understands is that our neighboring cities that we compete with are actually 4A or 4B cities where they have the opportunity to actually throw cash at developments. We've been giving our money to DART and so we don't have that in our tool chest. That's why I created the Chamber Foundation, it was to help to finalize deals and projects. It does kind of even the playing field. But at the end of the day, the incentives that are being given in our neighboring communities is far more than what we have the ability to offer here. So what I would propose going forward is that a percentage of, say, maybe the alcohol revenue or something like that can be actually used for economic development so that we canentise the businesses that we covet to come here. There's got to be some other way that we can, you know, provide incentives so that we can be competitive.
You know what, going into this, I know I don't have a lot of experience in this, but listening to Diane speak, I recognize I'm not going to have all the answers. I'm going to have to, all three of us here on Place One, we're going to have to go in and ask questions. We're going to have to talk to people who are experts like Diane and Matt and anyone else that, Michael Gallup's up here in the front, he's the Chamber of Commerce. What I want to do is I want to talk to people, I want to bring people together. I need input from other people. Through this campaign, I've talked to hundreds and hundreds of people and I've learned something every day in this campaign. learned something every day in this campaign. Because of this campaign, I've learned, what I've learned, I can apply it because of my education and my experience at Raytheon. And as I learn, I will jump into the role more and more, and I wanna emphasize that. Thank you.
Okay, Blake, this next question is specifically sent in for you. You have said in your interviews and opening statements at previous forums that you have been involved with our city since you were six years old. Besides your recent position as a junior alternate on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, what else have you done as a city volunteer?
Well, I did explain some in the introduction. I have volunteered over 15,000 hours to informing the public. Also, I've gone to countless council meetings. I think some of the people in the audience can attest to that, including you. And so I think that's important, that people attend or at least watch the meetings. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brownie, we're gonna start with you on this question. And some of these questions sound similar, but these were, it was written a little bit differently. So what are the most important issues the businesses in the city of Rowlett face?
I would guess the important issues of businesses would be customers. They need customers. And directing customers to them, whether it be advertising or whatever that they need to get them there, plus the growing population in Rowlett. DART, I think, is gonna help provide customers to a lot of the businesses that we have. They're providing customers to downtown area right now. I'm just, that's about all I can think of at this time. Thanks.
I would say that I think one of the problems that some businesses might face here is daytime hours. I think that directly affects, you know, the problem with commercial development that we have here. If we had more commercial businesses, like, let's say, State Farm over there off George Bush, that there would be more daytime hours for citizens coming into restaurants and funding those restaurants. I think that's important. Thank you.
So I'm gonna piggyback off of what Blake said, because I think that's really important to understand, is that we don't really have much of a daytime population outside of our seniors. We don't have a daytime, really, working population here in the city. Not that this is scientific or anything, but I took a Facebook poll a couple months back, I think, and I had 200 people respond about how far they commute to work each day. 140 of those 200 people, 70% said they commute over 10 miles every day. So you've got 70% of the city leaving every day, leaving our city limits and traveling outside where they're spending their money, where they're collecting a paycheck. And that's a real shame. And if Diane can do what she claims she can do and bring in some of this commercial development, that would be wonderful, because we can build up a daytime population where we can support our businesses long-term. Thank you.
Nobody else? Okay. Israel, we'll start with you this time. Everyone comes to council with their own preconceived views and opinions. How have your views changed over this election journey now that you have been exposed to more information and, if you attended the candidate information, the information you learned there?
I've learned a lot since I've been going to every, tried to make it to every city council meeting. I've learned a lot. The times that I can't make it, I always go back and see if I can find all the information on what went on during the meeting. And I go back and I study it. You know, 'cause a lot of times I can't make it to the city council meetings, but I do look it up and watch it. And just stuff that I didn't know, like I said, a lot of this stuff, when we got here, I didn't know nothing about, so I had to go back and learn about a lot of the stuff that's going on with the city. And since I've been studying a lot of it, I'm starting to learn more and more about it. And I know I still got a lot to learn about more with the city, especially with all the changes that are coming up with the city.
Through the course of my campaign, I've talked to hundreds of people. What I've learned is everybody experiences Rowlett differently. We need to be able to bring those perspectives together into a clear and coherent picture. I've learned about all different, I'm new to this community. It's forcing me to go out and talk to people, learn different, what the history of Rowlett is, what the history of this decision is. And what I've learned is that through that process, I've learned Rowlett's an incredible community, and people are very passionate about this city, and we need to reach out to that passion and get those people involved in the civic process, so we can leverage everything everybody knows in this community. And I'm really excited to do that as your next city council member.
Anybody else? Okay. Diane, next question, we're gonna start with you. And this is a general question again for everybody. There has been an enormous focus on one piece of legislation in Austin this year, the so-called bathroom bill. Would you ever consider implementing an ordinance of that type here in Rowlett if it didn't, and I don't believe it did pass in Austin? So would you ever consider implementing an ordinance of that type here in Rowlett? Why or why not?
No. I don't, that's not how I was raised. Those are not my beliefs. I mean, we have facilities that have bathrooms that have his or hers, but it's one person in there at a time. I'm for that. I'm not for it the other way around. Nope.
One, I'm going with it in my heart. No, I would not approve it. One, I would not allow my daughter to go in the bathroom with a man. No, I would not allow my wife to go in the bathroom with a man. No, I wouldn't even let my mama go in there with a man in the bathroom. No, I do not approve of it. No disrespect to anybody, because I'm not, I'm just being honest, that I will not approve it here in our city. Thank you.
That answer confused me. I wasn't sure if he was for or against the bathroom bill. Let me tell you what, the bathroom bill is a very important issue for me because of my experiences in the bathroom. Just look at me. Do you think I get positive looks when I go into the bathroom? When I go to the gym and they don't have family restrooms, I have to get a friend to take me to the bathroom with me to make sure people don't give me dirty looks or try to force me out of the bathroom. This is not an issue of protecting people who already feel safe in bathrooms. This is an issue about protecting those who experience discrimination already going into the bathroom. And putting this issue first and foremost in front of people's minds has only made it more dangerous for those of us that look like me. It doesn't matter if you're male or female. People just need to feel comfortable in public spaces, anywhere, not just the bathrooms.
I understand, Lena, and I'm gonna reiterate what I said. What I would propose is that you have one bathroom that is either or, one person in at a time.
Nobody else wants to answer?
I just wanna thank Diane for her answer. Those kinds of bathrooms in public spaces are very helpful. Thanks.
Like I said, no disrespect. I mean, I don't have nothing against anybody. I don't have no hatred against anybody. I love everybody. I got family members that are gay, I got a niece and a nephew, I got a sister, and I'm all up for it. And yes, I would agree with that one, that we would have one bathroom. And like I said, I don't have no disrespect for anybody like that. I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that. Thank you.
Okay, Jeff, we're gonna start with you on the next question. What do you believe is Rowlett's greatest opportunity in the next three years?
I would say our biggest opportunity by far right now within the next three years is Bayside. There's gonna be so much growth in that part of our city, in the southern part of our city on the peninsula, that it's gonna blow everybody away. And I think the way that we leverage that is by making Rowlett a destination, right? Making people that want to come here, making people want to come visit our city, and not just having them just go to Bayside. Let's build a culture inside our city so that people want to tour all of Rowlett. People are excited to come to our town. People are wanting to visit. And I think our biggest opportunity is to build on that and capitalize on those things. Thank you.
Sorry. I would like to add on to that. I do agree with that. I think with Bayside, at least I would hope that these commercial businesses or developers would see that Rowlett will eventually be a destination point, and that they'll want to develop in our city. I think that's very important, and I think Bayside will be a great asset to this community.
Yes. One, we need more entertainment. We need more entertainment in our city, so that way they can come through the city of Rowlett. And like I said, have Rowlett sitting on the map, so that way people can go back home and say, hey, where can we go to have fun? Go to Rowlett, Texas. That's where the entertainment is. That city is awesome. So yes, we need more entertainment in our city. Yes, Bola Rama's a good entertainment. We've been there. It's lovely, but we need more entertainment. And just to drag the people into our city and say that Rowlett's an awesome city. Thank you.
I think in the next three years, the city of Rowlett has some opportunity to possibly purchase some property. Had the city not purchased and/or sold Bayside, it wouldn't be happening. The city can better create commercial development if they own the property. Without owning the property, their hands are kind of tied. So if, in the next three years, the city should consider, you know, buying some property for our future.
Okay, Matt, we're gonna start with you this time. This is a general question for everybody. What is your understanding of the city council's invocation policy, and do you support it? Why or why not?
I'm definitely supportive of it. The invocation of being able to say a prayer before we start every city council meeting, and that got a lot of attention in the recent past with this city. And I believe that when you take God out of the Pledge of Allegiance, when you take it out of our city government, if we had a prayer to start today, and it's based on a Psalm, I think no matter what God you pray to, we all have to have that higher power that is helping to guide us to make the right decisions. And I would be, continue to be for that. It doesn't matter what God you're praying to. The one that I'm praying to is the one that I believe in, and I'm a godly man, and I'm a Christian man, and that's the one that I believe in. And I believe that we all need help as we move through this world and through our life. And I think that without that, we're lost. And you don't want a city council that's gonna be up there and it's lost. I think that that grounds us. It gives us a reason to, it just gives us guidance. Again, we're having these debates in a house of God, and don't let that be lost on you, you know? And so a lot of times, we try to push things out of life nowadays. We try to tear them down. We try to forget about them. We try to, I didn't get up and talk earlier because how can I talk better than Lena did? She spoke so eloquently about it, and I think we all should give her a round of applause for putting herself out like that in such a public forum. It's phenomenal. And it doesn't mean that we agree. But we have to be willing to accept everybody. And by doing that, and again, it's not saying that we're, you don't have to say which God you're praying to when you're praying before a city council member, even if it's just calling on whoever you believe in that is gonna help you to make the right decisions, and I'm completely for it. Thank you.
I'm truly impressed that our city council still holds fast to that, that they pray. I like that they offer the audience that if you don't wish to pray, that you don't have to. They're being inclusive that way. I think it's important that we pray, and as the chamber exec, we always prayed before every board meeting. We prayed at every luncheon, and I love that the city council does the same thing. What I'd like to see more of is the Pledge of Allegiance in our schools. My fear is that at some point, kids growing up, you know, in our future, aren't gonna know the pledge. So I think prayer is important, so is the pledge. Thanks.
My understanding of the invocation at the beginning of the council meetings, from speaking to a couple of council members, is that anyone has been invited to say a prayer at the beginning of the council meetings. And I'm in complete agreeance with that. I think Mayor Gutierrez has done a great job in supporting that through the years, and I would definitely continue to support that in the future. Thank you.
To me, it's very important. I taught my kids that every night before they go to bed, pray. Or they eat dinner, they pray. And yes, I believe that everyone, it's very important that we all pray. And like, you know, Matt said, you know, whoever your higher power is, that's your choice. But it's very important that we pray. We continue to pray. And yes, I will continue to loving to have, you know, Pledge of Allegiance in the prayers. I mean, 'cause it's very important that we pray, 'cause you pray, 'cause the God that I pray to gives me the strength. Every day before I get started my day, I pray to him every day. And at nighttime before we go to bed, I pray that he gives us, to keep us safe in our home. And I think it's very important that we all continue that, even with the city council. Before we even start anything, that we all pray. Thank you.
All right, Lena, we're gonna start with you. Again, this is a general question, and it's a long question. There is a steep learning curve to get up to speed and be an effective council member. Even the most prepared coming before you have said it takes at least a year to be effective. After this election, we will have at least three new council members. What have you done so far to help you prepare for this important role within our city? Also, please specifically address how many council meetings and P&amp;Z meetings you have attended in person.
It's really, that's a really great question, Michael, and I think it's really important because of the high turnover that we're experiencing on the city council. We'll see at least three out of seven new faces on the council. So that being said, what qualifies me, I don't think we have a year to get prepared on the city council. What I bring is my capacity to learn, to jump right into the role. My software engineering background gives me a leg up, I think, on my opponents here, jumping into the role of the city council, my project management skills, my background in that. And what I've been doing, I've been speaking to hundreds of people and learning about this community. I keep going on back to that, because it's really important to broaden your perspectives. My ability to bring together different perspectives and foster an opinion for myself, and then step into that opinion and assert it. I want to bring unique, fresh perspectives to the city council, and to bring citizen input into the city council. And all of those things that I've been doing over the course of this campaign has prepared me for that. And honestly, I think that's really important. I don't have the depth of knowledge that some of the candidates up here have in terms of city planning and city government, but I think I have the background to jump right into the role. into the role. As for how many meetings I've attended, I have been watching the feeds on Rowlett News and they're telling me to stop, but let me go ahead and answer that question. I've been, for the last several, since the campaign, I've been attending all of the city council meetings and I went to the budget work session last week and it was really informative and pretty awesome. Thanks.
So, again, countless council meetings I've attended, I couldn't, I don't have a number on me. I think one of the things that I've helped myself to be prepared to step into the position is I have seven books that are about the size of a brick, that thick. You have Form-Based Code, Comprehensive Plan, 2016 Budget, 2017 Budget, and so on. And I've been studying those every day. And I think it's important that these new candidates who haven't been on council before do that so that they come right in knowing the budget, the past budget, the current budget, Comprehensive Plan, Form-Based Code. Thank you.
There is a steep learning curve and you have to be aware of the issues that are going on. And since I've decided to run for council, I've been to almost every one. I think last Thursday, the budget briefing was the first one I'd missed, but watched it on TV and made a lot of the P&amp;Zs. Also was at the Council Candidate Forum. And I think that was very informative and that was great for the city staff to be able to take the time out of their day to be able to sit down with us for an entire day to brief us on everything that is happening in the city right now. And to me, anybody that is gonna be running for public office to be missing a day like that, not to be up to spade, just puts you behind the eight ball when you start.
Thought we were through. I've been hanging around the city council for about eight to nine years. Specifically, how many meetings have I been to? Goodness gracious, I have no idea. But I've been to a lot of them. As also I said in my opening statements, I've been through all the city citizens academies, fire, police, and city academy, plus the leadership Rowlett. I've been volunteered with the Partner Recreation Advisory Board, the Charter Review Board. I'm currently on the Senior Advisory Board because I am barely over 60. But yes, those things I think help me get ready for council. And just hanging around the council for the last eight to nine years, I've learned a lot. Thank you.
I've been attending council meetings since Shane Johnson was our mayor. I don't know if y'all remember him or not, but I've been to council meetings since before anybody that's currently serving as mayor and/or on council has been at council. Some of the documents that Blake was referring to that he's studied, I actually had a hand in helping, you know, put those together. So actually, I bring that to the table. But council meetings, I mean, I have been there, been to many of them. I'd say 2,000? Yes, for a number.
Okay. Blake, we're gonna start with you. Rest of the questions are general questions, so I'll quit saying that. As a council member, you will be responsible for representing all of the citizens of Rowlett. Sometimes that becomes difficult on a specific issue when there is a vocal minority. How will you make sure you are truly representing the best interest of our entire community?
Well, I would say anybody that comes up to me with a concern, no matter who they are, I will listen to them and I think that's important, that we all do that, no matter who they are. So I don't really have anything more to add to that. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I just wanna say that everybody's opinion is a valid opinion. It's really important to engage with the citizens' opinions, but it's also important to cut through the noise. Just because there's a vocal minority, as you say, doesn't mean, you need to take those opinions into account. You need to take the majority's opinions into account and you need to cut through the noise, so to speak. I mean, you got the staff's recommendation, you have expert opinions here. You need to bring together all of those details and form the basis of what your opinion is. And then you need to be able to articulate and justify that opinion using all of the information that you have in front of you. Thank you.
Transparency's been kind of an issue. It came up in the mayor's debate and then it has come up here again tonight. And when you have a situation like that where you get a small group that's together, and it's hard to dig through that in one night, in one council meeting or even in one P&amp;Z meeting. And so it's important that, again, if we're elected, we're gonna be serving you and there needs to be more transparency. One of the things that I would like to do that I see other cities that do is to bring back more of the town hall forums. How do we get out into the public and hear more back from the public on a more regular basis throughout the year so that we know what the citizens are really thinking and what their views are on certain topics? So I think if we can get out and we can start to bring more of those public input through town halls, through town forums and things like that, we can really start to get a better idea of what people are thinking. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay. Brownie, we're gonna start with you on this question. The city adopted a comprehensive plan in 2011 called Realize Rowlett 2020. The plan is scheduled for an update over the upcoming months. If you have an understanding of Realize Rowlett 2020, what components of it do you support and what components do you think need to be tweaked? And are you prepared to support the comprehensive plan that's developed by the citizens and will be updated by the citizens even if you don't agree 100% with all of it?
Let me ask, let me just answer that part first. Yes, I would support it 100%. When you're in a leadership role, you know, you may not agree with everything that comes out, but whatever the majority rules, that's what you support. What was your other part of the question, first part?
What components of Realize Rowlett 2020 do you support and what parts do you think need to be tweaked?
I participated heavily in Realize Rowlett 2020. I agree with all the components. But as with anything, I think it all needs to be tweaked. Everything needs to be looked at. It's kinda like a recipe. You know, you have a recipe, you create brand new. Once you tweak it a few times, all the parts of it, you get a much better product. So I think, yes, I think the new, the Realized Rowlett 2030 or whatever it's gonna be, I think that's gonna be a tweaking of the whole process and I think we're gonna come out with a good product. Thanks.
Rowlett 2020 strives to direct our community into strategic growth, which I totally agree with. But it does have weaknesses and I think we've identified some of those weaknesses in the past several months with some of the multifamily developments that are coming in. Primarily, I find that the concept of this urban village and the interconnectivity between other streets and other trail systems, if you will, that don't seem to exist within the city is problematic. I would definitely love for Rowlett to have a trail system, but right now we don't. And to expect developers to come into these urban village areas and develop properties which have trail systems connecting to nowhere, just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Would I support 2020 as its revision even if I didn't agree with it? Absolutely. Provided we get input from all of the citizens and not a vocal minority. We need to hear what everyone wants, not just what a select few desire. Thank you.
So I'm in huge favor of the trail systems. Trails have always been a part of the master thoroughfare plan, if you will. And going forward, if we do create these corporate campuses and things of that nature, I mean, I think any new development should have the trail aspect as a part of this component. And, you know, the ones that he's stating that are gonna go to nowhere will ultimately go somewhere. And at some point, all the trails that have been built with regard to new development, I mean, at that point, then the city has a whole lot less infrastructure to put in with regard to the trail system. But ultimately, a long time ago, the trail system was a way to give people the opportunity to choose a different way to work. If you wanted to ride your bike to work, if you worked in that corporate campus that we're gonna build or whatever. So, and people are trying to live healthier these days. I mean, I like to get out and run. Michael's an avid runner and to have a trail system in our community would just be a huge asset to me.
Yeah, I agree with Diana. And when you look at the first Rowlett 2020, it identified areas around town that we were going to look at starting to spur development into. And if you look at those areas, pretty much everyone except for Signature Gateway, we now have a catalyst project that's taking place in. That's remarkable. That means that it was successful. What does that mean once you've done that and it's any good plan is then you look at what's the next plan and what do you start to do from there? And this is gonna look a lot different. Obviously, it's gonna focus on things like North Shore and other places like that, but it's gonna take into some of these interconnectivity issues. I was at the polls today and a guy came and talked to me about trails. He's like, you know what, I love Bayside, but you know what, there's no way to get from where I am right now in downtown to Bayside except for in a car. And that's not okay. We have to start looking. Every other city around us has a trails master plan. We need to start looking at our trails master plan and how they all interconnect so that our trails don't go to anywhere, just go to nowhere, so that we make sure that we're connecting up with all of the other great work that's being done around this city. We're also getting ready, I know I've only got 10 seconds, but we're getting ready to spend a lot of money on streets and infrastructure. And when we're gonna do that, we need to make sure that we're planning for things like bike lanes while we're doing that. So that type of forward thinking that we need to do when we get ready to start spending all of this bond money has to be thought of and it has to be brought into the new comprehensive plan.
So I don't wanna give anybody the idea that I don't think the trail system's a great idea. That seems to be the perception from what they've said. I think the trail system is a great idea. I just think that Rowlett 2020 needs to be developed to make those things make sense. What Matt pointed out that that resident said is exactly right. There is no way to get there. So how do we incorporate that into what we're doing so that these ideas that we're coming up with as we revise Rowlett 2020 make sense for the city? Thank you.
Okay. We have two more questions in 14 more minutes. Israel, we're gonna start with you this time. It's a general question again. Many councils across the nation are dysfunctional because they can't work together for the good of the community. Over the last several years, the Rowlett City Council has worked together very well even though they have many differing opinions. How will you make sure to work effectively as a team even while expressing your independent views?
Very important thing is to work as a team. It's me being a manager, I got everybody in my store working as a team. Because once somebody's not as part of a team and it's not on the same role as everybody, everything is not balanced out. Then we're gonna have issues. Then it becomes a problem. But as a city councilman, I believe that we all should work as a team. Yes, some are gonna have different opinions. Yes, some of them are not gonna agree on things, but we still got to come together as a team to make things work. That is the very important part. Mayor, whoever the next mayor is, we're gonna work together with the mayor, everybody together as a team. And I'm telling you, if we work as a team, things will be balanced out and everything will work the way it should. Like I said, we're all gonna have different opinions on things. Some of them are not gonna agree on things, but we still gotta stay and work as a team to make things work right here in our city. Thank you.
As, at my job, I have a lot of experience working in teams. We build software systems together. We have different ideas of how that should happen and how it should occur. Something I've been saying at doors is I'm gonna be one voice of seven people. That's really important. All of those people are gonna have different experiences. They've talked to different people. They have different opinions. They have different expertise. Together, we make a team, together with all those different, all of those different opinions and backgrounds, we're gonna make a strong team. And that's really important. You need to value those different experiences and that's the basis of your opinions and that's the basis of your, how, so as long as we continue to respect each other and, as long as we continue to respect each other, we should be able to work as a team very well. And with my experience working in teams, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be a pretty awesome team member and continue, I wanna bring my opinions forward and articulate them.
Two words that seem to be lost in American politics these days is civil discourse. It is okay to disagree with someone and still respect their opinion. And I think that everybody up here would agree with that. And I think if we can just work under that premise, we can all get along and accomplish the same goals. Thank you.
I love that question because I do a lot of work with volunteers and I think Martha can attest to this. You ever had to try to manage a large group of volunteers and try to get them to do what you want them to do and you have absolutely no power over them? You have to know how to work as a team. And let me tell you, you know how you make those volunteers work and you know how you make things happen is because you set the goals upfront. And the thing that, why our city council has worked so well together and why it'll continue to work well together is because we all share a similar vision. And that's a vision for a better and brighter Rowlett. And if we do that and if we come together, the only way that you get divisive is if you have somebody that doesn't share that vision with you. And you guys have the power to do that. But I'm telling you what, I share the vision with the people that are on there. I share the vision with a lot of the people that are up here on stage and I guarantee you that it will work well with any of them because I share that vision with them. Thank you.
I just wanted to say real quickly that I think it's important, for instance, if it's a five-two vote and I'm one of the two, that at the end of the day, the vote passed. And so once I walk out that door, I will support that decision because the majority ruled. So I will support that decision and I will honor and respect the process and the protocol that we go through.
I do agree that going in as a team is very important. I also think going in with friendship is important. So going into the meeting friends and when what happens in the meeting, we all have our different views on things and I think all of us would be respectful of each other and as long as we leave as friends, I think that's extremely important. And I think that's what our current council is good at is they come in as friends and they leave as friends no matter what. Thank you.
That's one of the things that I tell my employees and also other managers. We disagree on a lot of stuff. And I tell them, you know, we come in here, we're business. Once we leave out of here, it's friendship. But you can't do both when it comes to business. I mean, business is business, friendship is friendship. But we disagree on a lot of stuff. I mean, there's times where we're really getting into it, but the thing is, at the end of the day, we have respect for each other and once we leave out of there, we leave as friends. And that's a very important part is to leave as friends no matter what. Thank you.
All right. Final question. We're gonna start with Diane. This is a general question that anyone can answer again. Diane, what would you do to promote the use of solar panel systems to reduce electric costs, electric cost for residents and businesses and make Rowlett a more green-friendly city? And would you favor developers who use solar in their design? Why or why not?
Okay, so this is not my wheelhouse. Yeah, I would support any kind of green development that works better for, you know, our air quality and all of that. I don't know how, really, to elaborate on this. I don't know how to promote solar panels because I really don't know anything about them. You know, but yeah, any kind of green development is always important, you know, that's lower emissions to our solar system, to all of that, you know, cleaner water, cleaner air, all that. But yeah, that's not anything I have any kind of expertise on, so it would be, you know, I'd be making a mistake to try and say something with regard to solar panels. Thank you.
Luckily, I do have a lot of experience with that kinda stuff and I could take up the next six minutes that we have here left to talk about this. And I've worked with a lot of, and it goes beyond solar panels. It needs to go into stormwater management too. I was recently in Philadelphia and met with their Public Works up there and they had a billion-dollar stormwater problem. And it was gonna cost them over a billion dollars to put in a 42 I was recently in Philadelphia and met with their Public Works up there, and they had a billion-dollar stormwater problem. And it was going to cost them over a billion dollars to put in a 42-inch diameter pipe. That's the size of this building, the size of this, the height of this, to handle their stormwater. And what they did was they invested through tax incentives and through other types of economic means for new development to install things like solar, to install green infrastructure, to install bio swells, to install things to be able to help relieve that type of stormwater. And what they found was, over five years, and $100 million investment through the city of Philadelphia, not only did they save themselves from spending a billion dollars, but they increased their economic growth, they increased their job growth, and they had cleaner, better water. So yes, we have to go more green, and we have to look at every tool that's in the toolbox as an economic incentive to be able to get the right type of sustainable development here in town. Thank you.
We all voted up here, and we're going to let Matt talk for the rest of the time about green energy. Just kidding. I'm not going to say a whole lot on this. Again, I don't have the background or the experience on this. But whether or not you believe in climate change, solar energy and green energy is more economically viable. And I definitely would like to see a trend towards green energy in this community. Whether or not, however we do that, we would have to see. We'd have to look at long-term vision plans and talk to people that know what they're talking about, like Matt. And see, and see how does that fit in the framework of Rowlett? Thank you.
I'm a lot like Lena and Diane, and I don't have a whole lot of experience with green energy solutions. But I think there's maybe three points to this question. The first of which is, how do we adopt our city into a system where we use green energy? So I would definitely love to see our city facilities, like the community center and our city hall, be solar-powered. It might come as a surprise to you that we have a waterless urinal in the men's restroom at city hall. I had no idea such a thing existed. And it's great that we have that. It's great that our city has taken the initiative to do that. The second part is with our residential. How do we encourage residents to adopt these solar panels and things that are green energy solutions? And I think education is key. I think if we can educate our citizens in the best way that we can through different mailers or anything that we can do to educate them on how that's going to help, would be great. And then, thirdly, is our commercial businesses. And that's certainly something that we should favor when it comes to selecting businesses for the future. Thank you.
I said I could do six minutes, so I'll just do another minute right now. Because, and this is more coming, I have to admit, this is coming from a different hat. And I'm sorry if I go a little bit over on this one, because this is coming from a different hat, because I'm really passionate about this, because it's what I do on a day-to-day basis. I said I wasn't at the council meeting Thursday night. And the reason it was, was because our company just launched our Dallas Urban Heat Island study for all of Dallas County. And what we did is we actually worked with Georgia Tech University, and we modeled what heat is doing here in Dallas. And you know what we found out? Not just the city of Dallas, but Dallas County, and part of Rowlett is in Dallas County. And what we found was because over 37% of the land area in Dallas County is impervious surface. So you know what that does? That creates stormwater problems, that creates urban heat island problems, and that creates air quality issues. All things that directly affect our health. And what we found was, in our hottest areas, for 150 days out of the year, we average over 101 degrees Fahrenheit. Think of that. That's an average for 150 days out of the year. If we don't start to think of things more sustainable, well, I say this all the time when I give talks. And again, I apologize, I get passionate about this stuff. If you want to stop economic development cold in its tracks, go to turn on the faucet, and the water doesn't come out. Have a rolling blackout. That will stop economic development in its tracks, no matter how many incentives you throw at it. We have three and a half million people that are going to be moving to this area, and we don't have the water resources to be able to meet that demand. If you want to end economic development, don't address those issues. If we don't start to look at how we become more sustainable as cities, it won't matter what anybody up here does, because people will leave. And that includes everyone that's out there. So these are things that need to be taken really seriously, and these are things that we need to have a larger vision on.
All right, and with that lesson in green energy, we're going to call it a wrap. As you can see, Matt is very passionate about green, but he wore blue. Anyways, thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. I hope you found this informative. Would love to hear any feedback from you, good or bad. We can always learn. I'm always learning, love to learn. So if we did things, if there are things you think we can do better, if we ever have to do these again, I want to know about them, so we can make things better, so you can learn more about our candidates. Thank you, candidates, for coming out. Thank you all for being here. Give them a round of applause. This is not easy. This is not easy, because you get questions you have absolutely no clue about, and you have to come up with an answer and sound intelligent. It's not an easy thing to do. And even if you do know stuff about it, unless it's green energy, you still have a hard time coming up with things to say. Sorry, Matt, I'm not trying to pick on you. But I think we had a good time tonight. Isn't it wonderful to see candidates actually have conversations and not hate each other? Thank you all. Thank you all. Thank you, Drew, once again. Thank you, Mr. Sound Man Larry. Is that right? Larry, yes. Thank you, Larry, for running our sound. Thank you, Laura, for taking care of timing for us. And once again, thank all of y'all for coming out tonight.